So, walk through, so then we're on to capital projects.
One of the capital projects that we have picked out here is the roof system for the school district. And we went ahead and officially advertised for a new roof to be put on. Advertised with Mizzouian for a few weeks and ended up having one contractor submit a bid on the project. And the contractor was Metal Works in Montana. We received their bid on six twenty-one at seven fifty-five in the morning. The big closing was at noon on that day. So, here is their bid. And if you wanted to open it, right now it'd be time to open that bid and take a look at it. There are a couple of additive alternates that were asked for on the bid. The base bid would be the roof itself. The additive alternate would be the rain gutters that we saw up on the old gym. And then there's other rain gutters on the district office. Off the back end of this building, there are some rain gutters. And on the new storage shed that was built last year, it was built without rain gutters. And so, there's all that rain gutter that is additive alternate number two. And so...
But the elementary roof, the elementary roof is in there?
The base bid for it, yes.
Alright, so we open this?
Here you go.
Oh, here we go.
I think there's a letter.
So Vicki, I think we've only done this once since I've been sitting on the board. Do I need to read this? Are we reading this? You read this.
Yes, we read.
How about that?
This is a proposal for the base bid on that roof. And it says, "With labor and equipment, removing and disposal of existing sheet metal and guttering gutter straps, EPS flute, three inch tapered, half inch EPS, fan fold coverboard mechanically attached, sixteen year TPO membrane ripping system mechanically attached, TPO on curtain pipes, TPO strapping to gutter plans, manufactured termination bar at curves and end perimeters, manufactured twenty year warranty, twenty gauge prefinished gutters and downspouts to tie to existing PVC tubing, Montana one percent and one point five percent bonding included. Price on the roof, sixty-six thousand three twenty-four." Okay, additive alternate number one. It says, "Commercial style gutters and downspouts off of the old gym. Removing disposal of existing gutter and downspouts, twenty-four gauge prefinished large gutters, twenty-four prefinished downspout, one percent and one point five percent bonding included. Price, twenty thousand four eleven."
Was that twenty thousand?
Four eleven.
That was just old gym?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Additive alternate number two. Residential style gutters and downspouts, backdoor gym, shingle roof building, administrative office, twenty-four gauge prefinished gutter, twenty-four gauge prefinished downspouts, six thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars. Here is the bond, the big bond that the contractor had to submit and sealed and certified. And chose a bond amount of ten percent of the amount of bid, which was what we laid out in our bid specs for this. And then we have insurance for it, that we asked for. And... Yes, everything's in order, follows the bid specs that was written and put by the board, so those are...
Is that twenty year warranty? Is that... That's not labor due, is it?
Uh, it's a term of two years. Uh, two years on the labor.
Two years.
Is what the bid specs have given.
And who's that from?
Metal Works in Montana.
Where did we advertise it? Mizzou?
Correct.
We got one, we got nowhere, we got eighty thousand dollars in one roof bid?
Roof bid.
Makes no sense to me. It's the hardest times right now. I put stuff up a bid to get fifty people. Which is, that's a lot of money to get one bid on, and about sixty-six thousand, and we got zero to compare it to. It's hard, it's very difficult for me. Very well, I know Metal Works Montana, I know they've worked very well. They're a reputable company, but one bid on that amount of money is just a tough one.
And there were other school districts that had bids, and at the same time, Zoslo will add a bid for services that they had advertised because they're looking at doing it in the schools. So they're bidding some engineering services and stuff, and their ad was right above ours.
At any rate, you don't use the plan exchange in Mizzou? That's the biggest, looked at bidders exchange in the state. Mizzou and... Check into that, that's where all bidders would look for. Don't know if I've ever looked for a bid to project myself in paper. It didn't seem like the right place to advertise for trying to get bids. What section do I have?
I haven't checked this.
I think there probably is a section there.
There is.
I was just saying, I think that meant...
That's what schools usually do, is the newspaper, that's the schools that I've worked at, put bids out. It's obviously been in the newspaper.
When you look in the plan exchange schools, there's hundreds of school bids in there. Every, every day, it's refreshed. That's where I go for all my bids. So it's just a, I think we should seriously take a look at that when you're looking for bids. Especially if you're putting out a project this size and getting old bids back.
So this would take care of the three things? No, not the steps, just the ripping?
Just the ripping, the ripping and then, and to take care of the lower elementary building. If you decide to go out into alternate number one, attached to it, and get the gutters around the old gymnasium roof that we walked across the street and looked up on and saw. And then, uh, the rain gutters around the district office floor. And when you select, you can choose whether or not to take either of alternates one or two. Or you can reject.
So one is including all the gutters that we made, is that correct?
No, one just includes the roof.
No, I mean, the additive alternator?
Just includes the...
The old gym.
The old gym. Just the old gym.
And if we add the number two, then that's the gutter?
District office and...
And all of that. So the one would be all three things?
Correct.
What's the six thousand dollars?
That does the rain gutters across the street on the district office building. Off of the back end of this building, there's some rain gutters that are not working. And then there's rain gutters on the storage unit that we built last summer.
I move that we approved the three things that they bid on. Any questions?
We should put it out for a rebid and invite people. It's a lot of money to pay something, a hundred thousand dollars here and nothing to compare. It's a lot. I would never make that decision on a house or in my own person. So, I recommend put it for a rebid and get some, getting some alternative numbers, that's a lot of money.
Now, you said, didn't you say that we know that others companies inside the...
Oh yeah, yeah, I'm not saying anything against the company at all. I'm just simply saying that you might have somebody else give you the exact same material and everything for thirty grand less. You're never gonna know. It's crazy bidding out there at this time. It's a tough economy and there are a lot of good people. As a comparison, I just, I don't feel, I feel very uncomfortable with that.
But in the process of that, we're behind as far as trying to get that done before school starts, so that...
Well, this is within the year, by the way.
So it has to be straight? Oh, yeah. By the end of the first, like a day.
By the end of the week.
And that means that we have to approve the bid, or was it enough that we approved the order? We have to reward the bid?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And we don't waste that money by the end of the month?
In reserve. But the thing about it is, you know, I would have liked to have had more bids. And certainly would have liked to have had a comparison. When they had to be put it in the paper, we advertised it as we were required to do so. And, you know, Metal Works Montana. You know, I don't know how hungry they are, but I suppose that they're probably as hungry as anybody else. And that their pencil is as sharp as anybody else. And that their workmanship will be as good as anybody else. So, you know, I don't, I don't know if you can get thirty thousand less on this project. I mean, that's...
No, no.
But there's a lot of people that advertise projects like this in newspaper. And if it's a regular, reputable company that's looking for work, they're gonna check the newspaper and see what's there. Or they've got other bits, yeah.
But this is an Old Metal Works Montana, it's been around a long time. And I'm glad to hear you say you know the guy, he's upstanding and stuff, so...
I didn't quite give him that good of a...
Good enough for me. I don't know where our undercurrent is here, it's real.
Alright, so, call for the question. Who's in favor of award, what's what we're doing, rewarding this bid?
Uh, the bid and the two added.
And the, because that was the motion?
Yeah, it was the motion.
Okay, um, so, all in favor of awarding all three of those items? Say aye.
Aye.
I guess I'm gonna say aye. Opposed? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you get to leave, will you?
Yep, opposed.
Okay. Okay, so, um, now we're on to the stormwater roof collection sum.
We talked about the stormwater roof collection sum. We do have a purchase order that had been made off Brown's that was, I mean, um, we do have a way to go to to take care of Brown has made a proposal to us. Where he was stating his work for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. Dig out the sun fired well and replace it with a thousand gallon tank and a pipe and run the water off in the paint for the new sump installed approximately, and then pour it through the well. Braise the water off the water line to the new sump approximately five feet deep, eight inch PVC pipe. We'll replace that asphalt on the west side portion of the playground, whole area where the tank could be installed. We'll then take the rest of that playground surface after they reseal it and we'll put crack sealant in these cracks that are in the area. And then we'll then finish and treat the entire asphalt area. We have the band construction, there was a new French drain in place of the concrete hole and tank of five hundred fifty gallons. With the ABD cab tied to existing drain line, four foot path, one hundred feet, ten fifty feet long of asphalt. And back door with the asphalt trench there. I recommend that you go over Brown's on the ground.
I move that we approved a purchase order for Brown. Was it Brown, accepting to do the work on the stormwater roof collection sum. Discussion? So now, if you were gonna call Mel's idea about...
Yeah, I'll talk to him.
So if that were in fact possible, would that make this...
Could probably be a savings.
Yeah, because you wouldn't have to do that second.
Alright, so we through the discussion? Call for a question?
Who's in favor?
We have the bid from Band Construction on the stairs. We have three thousand two hundred forty-six dollars to repair the steps down into the apartment.
Only got one bid on that.
And that's just the stairs? Then we would be going in and doing the...
The treads or stairs?
The painting and all of them?
Correct.
Okay.
What do you, what's how much were the...
Three thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars.
Two, that's a big one, that's a, that's a total.
Give it to us if you would.
We're gonna place existing stair tread, same as existing. Place existing damaged stair landing. So, what material is, same as existing?
Yeah.
Too vague, I guess. So stairs, stairs are horrible. Does anyone try running them?
I'll move that we, I want Band Construction, the project for the steps and the girls and boys. Cause that's both boys and girls' life, right?
Correct.
Okay. Discussion?
I'm sorry, what was the, what was the bid on that? It was three thousand two forty-six. It said sixteen.
It said sixteen, but both sides, not on one side. For one side. So it's on both sides.
Okay, so, call for a question? All those in favor of the stair project?
Aye.
Right here.
And then last bit of project, we, we have this management system. Silverback Learning. It is a software that helps us to collect data on our students and to manage that data. Mr. Cabalska, do you care to explain a little bit more detail on this for the board?
For which part is that?
Silverback.
So, okay, Silverback Learning, um, Silverback Learning is an organization that was formed in Boise, Idaho by administrators. And the reason they formed it is Idaho, about eight, oh, I mean, I've been here a long time now. About ten years ago, tried to create a data system for the entire state. Bringing several vendors together so that they would all work together and all the schools could use the same thing. And it failed miserably because they didn't use administrators or educators really to come in and help them out. They just used the vendors. So these guys put it together and they put together a really nice system. And what they've created is, it's called a data warehouse. And data warehouse is where we put all of our information in, whether it's test scores, grades. And test scores can be from our MAP tests that we take, it can be from the state CRTs, it can be the AP tests that the kids take, ACTs, it can be DIBLs tests at the elementary level. All different kinds of assessments, it can be classroom assessments. And then they actually, they increase it so it actually holds guidance issues to. So if there's a disciplinary issue, you can lay, put that into the system. And then it also allows you to pull down different types of accommodations. And it stores it for each kid individually, but it also stores a class. So, as a kid's moving through school, the teacher can look at the accommodations that are set up that have worked or haven't worked. So they know how to deal with the kid if an issue comes up, whether it's reading strategies or behavioral strategies or whatever. And so this, this allows all the teachers to work together that way, allow the school to work together to pay attention. So there's administrative level. And there's also a parent level, so parents can go in and see what's going on, which they feel is really important. It's kind of a three hundred and sixty degree tool for students, so parents know what needs to be done at home. So for instance, on the MAP scores, they can go in and, or end of a course assessment in a classroom, they can see if their student is struggling on reading, what accommodations the teachers put in for that student. And then the parents can be doing that at home, and it helps out quite a bit. It also allows for, there's curriculum information there. So when a teacher needs curriculum backup work for helping out a kid, there's ways to do that or from the classroom or anything like that. So it's a pretty nice way to do that, too. And so, there are schools now that are running it, they have a rep for Montana, sponsored by the school administrators of Montana. St. Ignatius started using it two years ago, and they really enjoy what it does because of the parental portal to it. And you can see these sets. You know, we have Schoolmaster, which has a pass system, you can go and see some things, but it doesn't put everything in one spot. And that's kind of what this does, it puts it all together in one area. So we can pull up data based on the student level, classroom level, grade level, school level, and can kind of show trends that we're working on and that type of thing. But St. Ignatius is doing it, AnaCon is moving to it, Shepherd's used it for a couple of years. Hellgate Elementary District's been using it for a few years. They all really like working.
So what we essentially have is in a school system like ourselves, we have these end of course assessments, we have these CRT scores, we have the MAP scores. And what we end up with is we become very data rich, which means we have all this information for it now. But what we, we have is a breakdown in terms of how that information gets shared to the parents, or how that information gets shared between the teachers. Especially when you start seeing specific issues with certain groups of students, whether they're your early youth students, whether they're your discipline issues students. But what this program will do is it'll take all that data. And right now, we're data rich with information for, because we're, we have a tough time scrappling that information out of that data. It'll, it'll pull it all through to one format for us electronically, and then line it up and lay it all out in a format that allows us to have a more cohesive way of reading and understanding that particular student's issue. And so, you've got all these parts up there, you've got Schoolmaster, you've got MAPs, and you've got the CRTs, and you've got Inbound Campus, and you've got all these different programs that are utilized in the school system, but don't talk to each other. This program don't tend to tie that together.
So my question is that, does this program, I mean, do you have to load all this information into the program so that then it can pull it together, or...
They will.
They will?
They will come in and you pay, there's a, or the initiation fee basically of what it is, and they'll load up three years of data for you, which is pretty good to have. And then you can start moving from there.
Okay, so it's not something you have to sit down and spend extra hours being on it?
Me or my secretary.
Yeah, your secretary or whatever, okay.
Must be a dollar figure on this?
There's eleven thousand dollars is the price on this project.
Is there a reason it not on that, our board pack?
It's just a, an item that can purchase at the end of year, it's not a capital project, it's not...
Are we allowed to hold on stuff that's not in the pack that I thought you just told me?
No, it's true. That's true.
None of this all end of year money we're spending?
Correct.
How much more we got with the roof and the sun and the locker rooms, a hundred and ten?
Yeah, that's it, that's it, that we're pretty much, that price is up right there.
We say this year at the end, how much, what do we, do we have a figure of this year at the end money that we have left? Is there, is there an actual number to that? Hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand?
Well, this, this ties everything off right here. We have supplies that were, you know, that are currently in order.
But we don't have an actual, we don't, you can't tell me we have two hundred thousand year end money left?
We have a hundred and twelve thousand is what it is.
One hundred and twelve thousand? I mean, our only problem obviously is, I'm, it's not on our agenda, it's kind of hard for me to build this law. For that, I wouldn't think I'd have an issue with the software at all. I'd like, kind of, my honest with you, I didn't, kind of went right over my head with a lot of that. I'd rather, it'd be better for me to get stuff and read up on it and have time to look into something rather than going on a decision quickly. Like that, I'm very familiar with softwares and whatnot, but it's not that style, I'd rather...
It's a brand, it's, it's really new. One of the things that it does is, that's, you pay per student, so you have that as an ongoing thing. But beyond that, there's, the big chunk of it is the initiation fee. And then they'll actually come up and do a training with our staff also, which is a real lasting habit with it. Cause everybody needs to learn how to work with it.
But I think the sign needs to be placed on for the off the gym, cause it's not on there. It's, it's not on, on the agenda of capital project, it's not on that one.
Wouldn't you say that we were guesstimating that it was gonna be to get started with these guys?
Total, it's right around eleven thousand.
Okay. And then, you said a yearly fee per student?
Yeah, they gave us a fee of ten dollars a kid.
Per year?
Yeah, so it'd be about eight thousand.
That's cheap, yeah. Okay.
Just our school has the data on there, or...
It'd just be our school. Just our school. It'd be set up just for our school. And then you'd have, just like you do with the pass system or whatever, you'd have a, you'd be able to use your student ID and your student password to get in and check that out. So only a parent can look at their own kid's information. And then the teachers can only look at students that they have. And then the administrators would see everybody.
And the tech, the name of it is Silverback?
It's Silverback Learning Mileposts.
It's not a capital project, but still can we, can we roll on it for year end money?
No, at this point, it's not on the agenda.
So that money's gonna go back in the reserves?
Yeah, let's move by some desks.
Journal music?
Those are, those desks are part of, you know, they're not capital improvements. They're supplies that have been brought in.
Oh, so we have desks and supplies that have been brought in?
Well, what's, uh, was this eleven thousand dollars for this thing? A final expenditure for this year?
It would be a final expenditure.
So it's on the agenda?
It could be it, I mean...
Can we add an agenda item?
Well, not at this point, it's not advertised as that. But one of the things that you do each year is you grant the authority to the superintendent administrator to pay down bills and incurred monies for identified expenditures. So that's, that's technically a tool that you've used in the past to say, okay, let's tie the, let's tie the budget off. And that is, if you have any excess monies, place them in the reserves and each tile.
Well, as far as this goes, on the agenda, it says authority for final expenditures for two thousand twelve thirteen.
Correct.
And so this silverback is part of our final expenditure.
It would be.
So there's no reason we can't act on it. The only rea, it's on the agenda, it's just not in this, in this thing that John sends out to us. But it is on the agenda because it's one of our final expenditures.
But one of the things that I want to make sure that you're clear on is trustees have the right to have, like this item in their pack at forty-eight dollars in advance. This wasn't in their pack at forty-eight dollars in advance. So, you know, technically, that trustee has the right to say, no, I need to see this stuff.
But do we have the... But do we have the option of going with it without having read that thing? Are you listening to all this? Do we have the option of, we can go for that?
I would say I'd leave the option for going and listen to next year's budget. I mean, these issues, monies. I think that that just, it just clouded the issue at this point and I'd rather be technically correct at this point.
Does this do away with report cards?
No.
We still get, yes and no. I mean, we, parents still have access to report cards online right now through our pass system. So they can utilize it that way. It does create a report card in a different format. Um so you can see your grades, but you can also see how you're doing on curriculum, you can see how, you know. And so it's it's a lot bigger than what your traditional report card would be.
Sounds good. So how much did you say the roof and all this other stuff was?
Oh, it roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the roof. Like a storm.
Okay. So technically, we we split where it's close to a hundred and ten thousand. We spent most of our hundred and twelve thousand.
On the capital projects.
The capital projects, yeah.
But this is, this is being placed separate as capital projects. Incorporated into our final expenditure of encumbrance.
Okay. All right, so um so as much as we want to, I think as we think this is a great idea, um we probably better, better not act on that tonight.
Well, I um.
Or what do you, I mean?
Well, I I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't know, it is, I'm kind of old fashioned, I guess. If this report cards and parent teacher conferences and stuff have been going reasonably well or. How much does technology we have to adopt? When does it ever stop? Somebody's always coming down the pipe.
It's not necessarily the technology part of it, it's the information part of it that's important for that. So that we get the parents involved and can constantly see what's going on. Um one of the things that we keep getting asked for education is to make the education of each child more transparent. So everybody kind of sees what's happening in the day to day aspect of it and that's what this program does.
One of the things that we're faced with in today's world, you know, it's different than say twenty years ago. Is that the parents of today's grade school students are much more into the multimedia age. Their ways, their ways of communication are very different.
That is true.
Than the ways in which I communicated when I was growing up. And so if you at times need to find um a vehicle by which you're going to connect with them. And if this is a vehicle that helps to connect with them, um then it's, you know, it serves its purpose.
Yeah.
Well, if I pocket dial you, that's because mine just dials everybody, it feels like, so sorry about that. Okay, so um I guess we need to keep moving on here then, right? So we're on to board goals and um and um John and I didn't get to talk about, he likes to have us thinking of the River Valley Republic story ideas so that we kind of pull our thoughts together. Um I'm not sure we're quite that formal about it, but I hope that each of us came with a list of ideas, the board goals. And um let's review, let's review what we were doing from last year. How about that? Um. Last year's goal ideas. Um. John said possible expansion of calendar and day uh to expand educational development, education development, I think that says. Um Mel had long avenue improvements, four way stop at the old highway in Long. Uh Mel also had a uh maintain standards for all programs, which should always be one of our goals, I think. And um success program for teachers, I think was another one of the things that Mike had written down that Mel was uh promoting. Now Dorothy was interested in finishing off the sidewalk over here at Ty Shoot that just kind of left, got left in a puddle of rocks. Um Falcon painted on the floor and on the gym wall, which that got done by the way. Um and Dorothy's still interested in a flag pole for the district office. I'm still trying to recruit a cu- a a boy scout for that, but if we follow by the bayside, I'm I'm done suggesting that to boy scouts. Um you also said maintain solidarity solidarity as a board, which is always an ongoing board goal. Um one of my hot buttons last year was a mentoring program for new teachers. Um that we really, really, really need to be developing, you know, our new teachers, which we have been working on in the past year, I know. Um and then something else that I wanted to try to come up with a way to do would be to post unofficial board minutes for the public sooner than the official board minutes. And we kind of, that kind of went by the wayside. Um but the long avenue improvements are going to be on track, right?
Yeah.
Because we have a grant for that.
We actually have talked with um the county, they're sending down the contract for converting over project management from the school district to River Valley County. So later this week, I should receive that, sign off on it and then the Safe Roads to School money will go directly to the county. And then the county will manage the CTEP. Because what they're doing is that blended project of Safe Roads to School and CTEP dollars. CTEP has quite a bit in terms of, you know, its requirements of engineering and its requirements of oversight. And we need to know how to deal with CTEP. So all those rules and regulations, the county does deal with, they also deal with Safe Roads to School rules and regulations. So they're more apt to be able to manage the project.
So, but we got that one, we scored. Um and then the one thing that Mike wanted to do is have periodic reviews at future meetings of how we were doing towards accomplishing our goals, which I think we did do once or twice this past year. So um, so I guess, I guess we should go around the table and uh see what ideas everybody has. And um, there should be like a couple of us writing this down, which John, you're there. Um, don't start with you. Who wants to start? Who, you want to start?
I'm fine.
You're good?
I'm new enough.
Okay, Dorothy, my dear.
No, I'll start.
Oh, you're going to start, you said you're fine to start.
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay, all right, I didn't hear all of that, okay.
Well, I mean, I, it's obviously what I campaigned on, so I mean, I'm new enough just to stay at that of what I, what I ran for. Day to be, you know, transparency, all of that, that's my main goal for myself. Um a- after seeing that walkthrough, I truly, I brought back a lot of, I mean, I graduated in nineteen eighty-three. And the school is, looks very, very similar to as when I left. And after being in the building industry, watching all the schools down the valley. You know, Victor, Stevie, Hamilton, Portales, they've done a lot of upgrades, you know, so I've been involved in those upgrade projects. I'd, I'd like to see our school improve in in some of those areas. So it's because I want to put it, not to make it sound bad, but I wasn't really, you know, I'd say while looking, walking through all those and through ours, we're quite a bit behind on on the effort of the schools compared to what Dave invested in there and done. That'd be a goal I'd like to take a look at.
Okay. I'm thinking, okay. How about you, Mel?
Well, I'm just glad that we're finally tapping out the roof problem and I think we're moving along and that's good. That's a good thing to, we were going to do that last year and we're going to be able to now, but now it's going to happen, so. So that's good.
No, it's like you said, there's, when I first arrived here eight years ago, there were significant issues. And there's only so much you can do. You try, you try to prioritize, try to break things up into, you know, bite sized chunks that you can deal with. And each year, I I am proud to say, each year we have made significant changes and significant improvements. But I do agree with you, Colleen, you know, it would be much nicer. And we've got some stuff going on in our building that is far more advanced than what schools down the valley have gone on technology wise. But we're sticking in the shell of an old, old classroom and an old, old locker room and old, old gyms. Not that they don't do the job, they are doing the job, but, you know, we beat the tar out of this old gym because we got an amazing slash cafeteria. We have parents in this community that really want to rest in them. Where would you stick your rest in them? We got the need for, you know, middle school science lab. You know, it'd be nice to have a nice science lab for the middle school students. So there, there are some things that, yeah, you're absolutely right. Facility is a big issue, but we need to take on it at the same time as Mel is, right now. We're taking care of what we do have.
Yeah, I would agree, yes, and as you're looking buildings, school line, you know, it's. Serves a purpose pretty good. And and it is a big thing here, but sewer now is going to be uh brand new and nice. Get the roofs up and shake.
I think John said pretty well when he said you're built, we're building from the inside.
Yeah.
And that's all we can do when we've got an old shell of a building and start to fall apart, is we've got to keep, keep it going somehow. Up to, I know the fact that we live in a community that, I mean, they, we've, there have been years when we tried to pass a law for a new building and we're turned down. So um I guess when I ran twelve years ago, my goal was to be able to see a new building built. And it didn't take me long after serving on the board to realize that that, that I needed to readjust my, my goal. And so from that point on, um realizing that even though I felt that way, there are many in the community that didn't feel that way. And 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 for for whatever reason, and I understand, it's all economic. And so I had to change my priorities and a lot of it's is doing exactly what we've been talking about, building this all from the inside out. Because you don't have a choice. I mean, we've got grading everything, but we have to have a facility that can, you know, house all of these teachers and students and things. And it's, and it's got to be brought up to code, which it, it wasn't, you know, twelve years ago. But um but it's come a long way.
It's kind of like the parking lot across the street. You know, we have the big, huge mud puddles that set out there. And it wasn't until the day that Zane was walking across with his crutches and stinking down the middle of life that it was just like, we're better than this. You know, you can't expect kids on crutches to be walking through mud puddles to get to cars. And so, you know, that's when we put the sumps in. And then we slowly, you know, after the sumps got put in, we got the trails in, we got the millions put in. And it took some time, but that's a tremendously different parking lot than it was five years ago.
Well, I think, when I came off from graduation and and that parking lot is absolutely full and there's people. I think if we're in a town, did they park before? Yeah. You know, where, where were they?
Up every little street.
Yeah, I mean, so that has been huge. I think we need to, to work to promote a, a positive uh response from the community, maybe by involving them more as far as telling them what we're doing. Like we're sitting here talking about, we've got this fixed and we fixed that. I think in that newsletter that goes out every month, there should be a list in here, here's what we did this month, here's what we fixed. There were hot water faucets not working, we fixed it. We, I think we need to get across to the community what we're doing here that's positive. Because there's so much negativity floating around. And I want people to know that being a board member is not an easy job. It's not like we get paid and we're doing the best we can. And I think we need, we need to get that to the people, that we're doing the best we can. That we're not here to bask in the glory and and riches of being a board member. We're trying to do things for the school and for the kids. And let them know that here's what, here's what we did this month. That's another reason that, you know, the board minutes may be, but but even in the newsletter, just write in there and say, this, this is what we.
Ties in with one of my goals.
This is what went wrong this month and this is what we had to do to get it fixed. You know, we have an older building, things are bound to happen, here's what happened this month. And just kind of get it out there so they, so they know that we're not just coming to the meetings and and cutting dried stuff and and just passing it off. I think they need to know what we're doing. That ties in with one of my goals, which is um, I've been, I've been saying for a year or more that I'd like to have a a school board column in the newsletter, if not every month, maybe every other month. But it needs to be one of us writing it and I'm not pointing at me, somebody else needs to write it besides me. So I I would love for us to.
I don't know, you have to be there.
On our own, I can delegate.
Yes, you can.
I can delegate, but my, um, but I think that we should be making better use of what's out there in the Falcon View. Or the, the, you know, the mailing that we're already doing, the households that we're already reaching. Um and um I would like to see us have a um so, in some way, a better editing system for that, uh for the whole paper. And I would like to see us take advantage of a school board column, like I say, or an article, if if not uh if not every month, uh that maybe we we break it up between the three of you guys and you and me or whatever. Then what is that, ten issues of the paper, that's two a piece. Instead of everybody trying to have to come up with something every month. And then God bless the second graders who get their limericks in every single time, but we need to be using that space a little better. Um to to talk about things that are going on at school. There should never be an excuse that Booster Club's article didn't get in or that didn't have room for this or that. Um uh you know, that whatever, there should not, I mean, I think we need, we need somebody really editing the paper. And um I I don't want that to sound like, I know what that sounds like, you guys know what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying. You know what I think that sounds like.
It's a big kettle of worms.
It is a big kettle of worms, but it's, I think it's our kettle of worms to be involved in. I, you may disagree having sat in that chair. Um but I think we are doing ourselves a disservice by not making that newspaper work better for us.
Well, you're just talking about putting minutes in there.
Not in the news, not necessarily in the newspaper, we could do that too, but um I'm talking about putting the minutes on on the website uh as unofficial. Like we put the official minutes on there, if the unofficial, but that could be five weeks after the meeting. Or four weeks or six weeks or eight weeks in during the summer. Because we won't have an approved minutes meeting until August for this meeting right here. Um so if you were going to put the minutes out on the me, for people to know in a timely manner what was talked about, you have to put them out as unofficial until they're approved. So there can be some legal issues involved with that, but um.
Well, it gets into, I think it gets into a structural issue that too. You know, one of the things that we do is is we heap a lot of responsibility onto our district clerk. She has payroll that she needs to get out, she has, you know, all these things, bills, the, they, making sure that all that happens. And um over the course of the month's work, it isn't that the minutes get done absolutely, the minute after the meeting is done. There are sometimes there are things that are much more important.
Sure.
-that have to be dealt with because we're doing insurance carriers, insurance facility issues that are deadlines from OPI and stuff. And so she prioritizes her time, and there are, there are months where it's the week before the board meeting and she finally now has the time to begin work on, you know, putting those minutes together. And if you put unofficial minutes up immediately after the board meeting, I would say you would have to have a different person helping to take the minutes in the meeting that has that as one of their top priorities. Because minutes are not a top priority. They're a priority, but not the top priority of the person.
Well, I'm a little uncomfortable with putting them out until they're official. I think, I think, I think there needs to be a process for the legality of that. And I, I mean, I, I want, I want to be transparent, and I want the public to know what we've done, but, um, I think as a board, we have the right, that that's one of our responsibilities is to, is to, we're not edit, but to certainly look them through and, and, um, call them official before they go out to the public.
I think we need to, uh, somehow stress the point to the people that if they really want to know what's going on, the board needs to come to the meetings.
We've said that before, and I agree with that.
I mean, they have said all of them.
But there are people who are never going to be able to get to come.
But on the other hand, on your phone system or something, do we have a way that you could leave a recording of this, this is the official, or this is the unofficial meeting, uh, minutes in the meeting that was held on such and such a date? And then just go through and just hit, just the highlights? I mean, you could go right down the agenda and say, fourth grade teacher resignation was accepted. Fourth grade teacher opening was approved to be advertised. And just like, just a very brief, you know, such and such subject.
It's more like an overview of the board.
Just an overview, motion carried five to zero. Such and such item was tabled. And you, the person that puts it on there could just rewrite down the agenda and just put the results, they wouldn't have to put the discussion.
One or two, one or two bullet points for each item.
Yeah, yeah. And, and then if somebody wants, wants to know what went on at the board meeting, they could dial that number and listen to it, and just get a, just get a general idea of it. So that they, they wouldn't have all the details, but they'd know, like, you know, it's like this one. You could, when you went board work, work session, facility walked through, the board of trustees, and the superintendent walked through the grounds, looking at summer projects, through uh, capital projects. You could listen, these were approved. Board discussed their goals. And just go down, just, just a real brief thing. So they could find out with, you know, did they, did they hire a fifth grade teacher? And you could read on there, yes, you know, they did hire a teacher. Wouldn't have to be details, just what they did.
Well, that takes me to another thing that, that I wonder if we could do. We're making our own recording of these meetings. Why can't we put that on our website within twenty-four hours? So that people can watch the meeting. Then we have our own version of it out there.
We don't have to. Forrest Crawford Review puts it on Facebook.
Yeah, but we would want to put our own out on the, on the website.
But I mean, how do you can do it?
But we could put, you know, just put the whole meeting out there. Um, and that would then solve the whole issue of whether you had official minutes or not, people could sit and watch the meeting.
Yeah.
So then that becomes a technical question of being sure that we're get, you know, that it's getting recorded in a way that people can, can view it. Uh, and then it, then it gets popped up there.
Well, people get to watch the meetings. Missoula County.
Well, and that leads me to another, another suggestion. Um, somebody made a suggestion to me that potentially, uh, MCAT, Missoula Community Access Television Channel, might be willing to, um, broadcast our meetings for us, because we do have Missoula County folks who live in our school district. And that there's potential there that they might be able to, to, or they might be willing to do that.
That's solved.
Um, but if we could, if we could take our own recording, put it on the website, you know, within twenty-four or forty-eight hours, then the whole issue of whether the minutes are official or not does, isn't, you know, doesn't become a legal issue, we've got, because again, the recording is there. And people can rewind on YouTube or whatever, you know, well, YouTube would be on our website, so. Um, I, I would, I would like to see if we can't have Gary come up with a plan about how that's done and what needs to be done. And then we should also, you know, maybe we can get in touch with these people at MCAT and see whether they're interested in doing the recording or displaying the recording. Um, that would be, I mean, that would take the whole, that would be given, the whole issue of timeliness, just put it out there. And then, then we don't have to worry about whether we're going to change the wording of this or that, or three other things. And gives us that coverage that we want to have. So maybe if we could, you know, our August meeting, have some sort of idea whether we could do that. Did you finish up on your goals?
I guess I didn't have any goals, I just, you know, I'm glad that we did, we had the way we had to do it. What we're going to accomplish.
Okay. And Dorothy, I, I kind of jumped in on yours when you were talking about having, you know, talking about tooting our own horn in the paper.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, what you call visibility, communication. We need to, we can't just sit back and and quietly do our job because people don't realize what we're doing. And some of them don't think we do anything, some of them think we do things wrong.
I'll pull a plan together and see, try to come back in August. You know, and see if I can share.
So, so if, and if we, if we divided up, you know, the, the main article, whether it's high school, middle school, elementary, superintendent's office, school board, that makes us with two, maybe three tops times a year, we each can figure out something logical for that. And-
I think having the board members write something for the newsletter is a real sticky thing, because as a board member, you have to be so careful what you tell people. And you can't go out on a limb and promise them, you're going to do this, you're going to do that. And you can't say, you know, I don't like this and I don't like that, because we act as a board. And so, you couldn't go out on your own little thing and say, you know, this is wrong, I tried to give support, but they didn't listen.
Well, I think it would be really hard, it would have to be hopefully positive, you know?
To get their message out when they were struggling with the, um, the local media to get their message out. And they felt that that had been very effective with, uh, with community members, that people liked that. And then another, um, and this is just an idea I'm tossing out there. I know we have a student council member who off, who sits at the table with us and gives a report. Uh, this other school had uh, worked out a thing where they had a student, high school student representative to the board, who then lit, came and sat in and listened to issues that, that involved the students. And then they went back and they met with their students, and then they would come back and report on issues that involved them. Whether it was handbook issues or anything like that. But, um, student council, as I see it, golly, they come and just tell us what little activities they're doing.
Why don't they have an article once in a while? They do such good things.
They do, they should.
They don't do their own, how do you do it?
So, but, but the, the difference I see with student council and actively, and, and I don't see them as, as an active group involving the students in beyond what their little scope is of having the honors lunch and doing, I don't see them as active um, participants in, in the government of their school, per se, even though they, they're student council. Am I on base there?
No, I think you're right.
Am I, am I, I mean, I, I, I'm not that we need to have another report at the meetings, but, if the kids have a, if the kids have a question or a hot button, they always have the opportunity to come to us and say, can we come and talk at the meeting, right? Which, I don't know if they know that's available, but if we had a student representative who would be an active participant with what goes on here. They, again, this particular school, this board member said she felt that that really had, um, been effective with the, the high school kids. That they, uh, they felt like they had more say in their destiny. Especially when it was topics that were, you know, related directly to their everyday lives. Um, so I don't know whether that's worth considering down the road. But just wanted to throw that out there, you always just meet interesting people when you go that kind of stuff. So, let's see, let me see, I think those are, that, that, beyond that, the, my last goal is, you know, the, our, our goals are always spend the money the best way we can, do the best we can for the kids. You know, be sure that we're providing the best experience that we can for them. And, and, and last but not least, I, uh, you know, board goals should be boardsmanship of what happens here at the table. Um, how we, uh, work our, outside of our little environment here. Because this is really the only time we have on the authority is when we're sitting here in a meeting. And so, we, you know, we, um, have had the luxury in the last, uh, in the last few years here, at least while I've been here at the board, to know that everybody had the chance to have their say here at the table. And whatever the vote was, we all said, okay, we got to vote, maybe went my way, maybe didn't. But we walked away as a unified group who knew our goal was doing the best thing that we could for the kids. And I, I think that, you know, we all want to, we, uh, we all feel like that's probably a really, really important goal to continue to work towards. Um, to just always keep in the back of our mind that, um, we, we're, we're here because we need to be doing what we can to make this experience for the kids the best one that we can. Within the limits and guidelines of what we're allowed and able to do legally and financially, uh, as well as, you know, morally and whatever. So, you know, just working together as a board, knowing that you get to have your say at the table. And that your vote actually counts. And we, you know, we've been able, like I say, had a, had a strong working relationship. And I, I really, uh, feel like that we want to keep striving for that. So. I'm, I'm preaching, sorry.
Wonder how long it will take before we get some activity that we all have.
Oh, you mean construction wise? Well, I don't think it's going to happen this summer or this fall. I would, I would venture to guess they're pulling the contracts together, they're then going to, uh, let out uh, requests for proposals for, uh, engineering. And the commissioners will hire on in engineering for them. And they'll go through a design phase, it'll take a couple of months. After they do the design phase, they may then, if there's any rivalry issues that they need to discover or work with, that takes X number of months. I would suspect, no. They probably will let bids on it in February or March next year. For a summer project for next summer. And if they do that, one of the things about those types of projects is the crews that come in and bid those are usually between hundred and February, March. Because they're trying to line up their summer work, and so it'd be a really opportune time for them to let bids out by then.
Yeah. A little earlier. Well, this has to be very, I watch them pretty close, so keep our fingers crossed.
Well, I was going to say, you know, I'd be surprised if, if the stone was moved before next year, because you can't seem to get anything going over here at Eight Mile, they're going to tear that up right in October, and then it'll be all a mess for the whole rest of the winter. At this point. But maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm pessimistic there. So. So, um, oh, one, one other thing, um, we, uh, we talked last, uh, we talked about, um, trying to break, uh, the review for the superintendent into two chunks instead of one big chunk. Um, and have a, uh, and, and so I guess we should, in some way, consider how we're going to, or, or if we do divide up the, um, actual review form that we use, if we want to continue to do that in one chunk, and then have a, a mid-year where are we, how's it going? Are we, are we meeting the goals that we talked about in, in the January issue? And so, we are going to have that kind of meeting here still this year for a, a mid-year. But I think that we, I think that we, uh, will find that there's some good benefit to that. Having a, a kind of a mid-year review of that, so that because it's a huge form that we all just grind our teeth about. And, um, but you got to do something formal, so. Whether we continue to use that form or whether we do, whether we break that form in half in some way and do part of it each time, I don't know. But I still, we're still planning to have a, a mid-year review for, what can we do to help you kind of thing.
Great conversation. But I guess my, my number one goal is boardsmanship. And Pat, you can add it. But, um, and Colby, you're the new guy on the block, and I'm not picking on you at all. Because I want you to get to know us. And I, I think you sat in meetings and, and watched this and, and whatever, but, um, I want, I want this board within this next year to, you know, to develop the trust. And we really do have to trust each other, because we have very important issues that we are dealing with. And, and that's part of boarding, boardsmanship. Um, I have, and I have asked both Mr. McGee and Pat, it's really important that we have, you know, either the North High School Board Association or our attorney come in, and she has come in every year, and kind of run a little boardsmanship workshop with us, so that we not just you, but all of us remember exactly what, um, what were our parameters are as, as far as trustees, what we can do and what we can't do. You know, so that would be a, a goal for me to have. And I think in the process of that, as we get to know each other better, then there is that trust, because there are times, Colby, when, when we're sitting up here as five, and there's a whole group of people out there, it's nice to know that, that we have each other's backs. That we, that we're here, as Pat said, because we care about the kids in this community, and we're trying to do the right thing for the right reason. And sometimes people don't understand why we're doing what we're doing. But we do it because we really care about the kids. Um, certainly we're concerned about the community also, but our, our big issue is that we're, we are their, their advocates. And that's, that's, that is, that's a huge responsibility. And I think both Dorothy and Pat have discussed the fact, and you two know, I mean, we have, we've put hours and hours and hours into this job, and sure, Colby, in the last few months, you've had, how, how many meetings have you had to come just in the last, you know, since you've been on? And this is what we've been doing for, you know, a number of years, and I think a lot of people don't realize that. So I like your idea about the school board article. You know, I, I hear you, I hear what you're saying, Dorothy, and I would volunteer, and I need to tell you if you do not want-
To write the first one.
To write the first one, and I think it could be, I think it could be bimonthly. But, um, I think, and we can incorporate, you know, if in fact we, we go to a workshop, or we do this, or do that. We're not just educating ourselves as trustees, we're educating the, the community as far as what our responsibilities are as trustees. I mean, certainly there are, you know, going over some of the things that we've, that we've dealt with in our meetings is important. You know, on, on a very simple basis, but, um, I think the more that they can understand. I, I, I thought it interesting, I don't know if you read the, was, in the Missoula, was it Sunday? There's several new trustees on the Missoula, you know, board trustees, and there was one individual that was very concerned about, they just have, you know, had their contract with their teachers, and, and she had all these, you know, perceptions about what had happened, and then when she got to the meeting and started listening to the other trustees, she truly found out. And then when she got to the meeting and started listening to the other trustees, she truly found out not every teacher in this, in the, in their school district makes ninety-two thousand dollars a year. I mean, you know, and these are all things that you wouldn't know had you, you know, if you'd come in. And I think they, that those trustees and their superintendent recognized that, my gosh, you've got to do, you've got to, to mentor your new trustees so that they understand these issues, that, you know, that some of us who've been on the board for, for a hundred years, we understand. But for new members, that's, you know, they don't understand those things. So that's our responsibility to, to mentor that also, and that's part of boardsmanship. And so, and I think, and that's part of boardsmanship for our community members, and so that we can share that with them. And so I think that's a great avenue for us to be able to, to share that. It doesn't have to be a long article, but I think it, I think it's, I think it's overdue. I think we, I think we need to do that. Um, and my only other thing is I'm so glad that you talked about the building. I mean, wow, I'm excited about this. My favorite topic. Um, but, you know, as we walk through tonight, if I was gonna pick one thing that we needed in this school, it would be a new kitchen.
Yeah.
And, and, and maybe we have to have a new building to do that, I don't know, but I mean, a new something. But, but I'm, I'm, you got me fired up, Colby, I'm, I'm kind of excited about this. So, um, I would think that that was something that we might be able to look at.
Get a new school, get a new kitchen.
You know, my gosh, those women deserve-
They're, they're the equivalent of working in one of these little on-wheels things where they're serving stuff out.
Absolutely, and they're serving nine hundred kids.
That's about, that's about how much room they have, yeah.
So that would, those are, those would be my three goals.
Got a new kitchen.
Okay. Anybody else? John, you didn't get a chance.
Oh, I was just listening to you.
Sorry. Well, um, anybody else have something? So we've, uh, we've got this down in some sort of form here so that we can revisit this in, uh, in two or three, well, let's revisit the August meeting about a couple of things.
We'll organize this out, uh, pin it out, and bring it back for official approval, uh, August meeting.
Okay.
Now, whether you can see it from the format, it's okay, you're good for direction, I don't want you to come on. Okay?
Okay. All right, so. Um, so we are now on to new business.
June Lawrence?
Yes, June Lawrence.